So Vanek is the guy on the TV. And there are first presenters. I thought he was gonna be here, but he sent me a link, so. We've got a couple minutes yet. And I don't know, did we ever decide, you guys, if we were gonna do anything with that last one? Do you remember when we talked about that? I didn't know if it did.
No, I don't think we could sell it for half.
But I have a big case for the house on the meeting because it's good.
Let's talk about your meeting.
It's not on the agenda.
Well.
It'll be my announcements. I heard the bills, I have another meeting between the duties. Is that this package or?
Is it underneath your agenda? Is it under this agenda?
If I give you a bill and she probably she'll over it for you.
Is Ryan supposed to be here?
Oh, he's supposed to be here, yeah.
Okay, you guys ready to load? Call me in order, please. Will you approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to order to approve the agenda.
Second to agenda, all in. This is opportunity, just to counsel.
First and foremost, I am here as a member of the community of Pocahontas. I am also a member of the sheriff's office, which is a county employee. But I am here as a citizen of Pocahontas. I say this because in the last meeting, it was said that county employees came in numbers. There were four of us. That also are citizens of this town. Something that has stuck in my mind since the last meeting was that I heard a member say it seemed like this was personal. Yes, it is personal. We all live in this town, it should be personal. I believe that it was asked several times, but not answered. What do we, the citizens, gain from this merger? I understand that it will save money. But let's be honest. It will get spent somewhere else. I'm also having a hard time understanding twenty hours of admin time in Lorenz that Lou himself said last meeting that he could easily do, so I would think that it would take at least twenty hours here for admin also. That's already forty hours without even doing any patrol time. If we have four applicants, have we hired anyone for Pocahontas's empty spot yet? If all four applicants are uncertified, it will take months before they are ready to work. I feel as if this will put a strain on our already short-handed PD. It is to my understanding that after the last meeting, we lost a part-time PD member because of some of the half-truths that were said in the last meeting regarding as if Pokey had been already patrolling Lorenz. With that being said, half-truths are about as polite as I can say it. There have been several spoken since the last meeting. I spoke with Jake Point, as we have been friends since high school, and I had asked him if he had ever been contacted. Jake stated yes. With the facts of October eighth at two thirty PM in the afternoon, he got a call from Lou about a contract being made with the PD. Jake stated to me that he was very happy with the sheriff's office and was not interested in a change. Jake also told me that he would have been here today to set the record straight, but he had back surgery this afternoon. He did tell me to let you all know that I have his number if anyone would like to contact him directly about that half-truth. Oh, I lost my spot. I do not have, oh, I do have his number if you guys want it. I would ask that we do. What do the citizens gain? I am afraid that this will strain our already short PD and we will lose more employees. Please take time to think this through thoroughly. We have time. We do not need to be on Lorenz's time clock. Or lose, for that matter. To make this important decision, it's too much of an important decision to push this through quickly.
Um, well, good afternoon. I looked, last time I spoke was minus, the last meeting was St. Patrick's Day, so it's been a minute since we all chatted last. Um, you'll have to forgive my directness today, I'm dealing with a migraine and frankly, even if not, I'm already frustrated. After four months of raising the same concerns, it feels like my requests continue to fall in deaf ears. I was speaking today not just as a concerned citizen, but as someone who has put in the time to research and track down information that should already be easily accessible to the public before coming to you all with my concerns. In recent meetings, it has become clear that some of you, if not all of you, are elected officials entrusted and paid, albeit very modestly and minimally, to represent us, are relying on others to summarize key contracts and decisions instead of reviewing them for yourselves. A clear example was recently the confusion over the Prairie Estate contract raised by Greg White, where you all thought it had conveyed something that you guys wanted to, but the legality of it was quite different. Or the discussion of the lifeguard wages. The majority of council could not even recall when that was last addressed. Did someone consider whether that responsibility even falls under council authority? Or whether it actually belonged to the park board? These oversights erode public confidence. If I, an unpaid citizen, can look this up in the city code, why can you all not? This points to a larger issue. Transparency and access. Frankly, again, it is starting to feel like banging my head against brick wall. I have streamed meetings myself because there is no consistent method for residents to stay informed, despite asking you all repeatedly for the past four months to implement one. The public response has been overwhelmingly positive. Before I just stood up here, there are eighteen people watching this livestream currently. Many others will watch it later this evening, once they get off work. The public, um, the public's response has been so positive in that people have actually reached out and offered to help me purchase better recording equipment so that they can further hear clear and concisely what is going on. Something no citizen should have to worry about. The city has the tools to stream meetings, as we have seen, via this existing TV setup. Why is it not being used? Why has nothing changed after so many repeated requests? I also want to revisit the special meeting of sharing police services with Lorenz. Time and again, residents asked, what is the benefit to the people of Pocahontas? A clear answer was never given. I remain deeply concerned about the liability risks and the precedent this sets. We're already seeing a ripple effect. I know for certain, one town has asked the county sheriff for reduced rates. What happens when more towns follow suit? How will we justify turning them down when we said yes to helping Lorenz? Shortly after that meeting, an officer who had just agreed to stay on part-time resigned abruptly. To me, that's a red flag. Are exit interviews being conducted? If so, who is conducting them? We've seen a steady pattern of departures over the last few years, with many going to the county. Is it truly about our benefits package? Or is there something deeper at play here? Let's be honest, if the police chief wants to assist Lorenz, wouldn't the proper course of action be for him to apply directly to them as a part-time employee? Get paid by them and be held by their policies and liability coverage? At the end of the day, this is about accountability, about process, and most importantly, about respect. For all the citizens who care, who are paying attention and who deserve better communication and clearer leadership from this council. Thank you.
Moving on. Consent agenda? Okay, then we come up, is this Ben?
Hi, that's me.
Hello. And you're discussing the...
Waste treatment.
Waste treatment. Situation, okay.
That would be me, my partner is right here. Hey, Tom. All right, can everybody see my screen?
I think so.
Is that what we're supposed to see?
Yeah, I gotta get that on.
I know.
Well, just a minute. There we go. Go ahead, Ben.
Let's see if I can, this went a lot different last night. Everybody can see that though?
Yep.
This was easier when nobody was here. Can you tell me what you are seeing?
We see your screen.
I can't figure it out.
Just your PowerPoint display.
Oh, perfect, okay. Let's go back to that.
There you go.
Now it's not letting me see it. If you can see it from there, maybe we just run that route, because now it's taking up both my screens. How's that, can you see it still?
Yep, yep.
Awesome. Still got it?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, well, I appreciate you guys having me. I've spent a lot of time kind of getting my arms around this problem. I guess I'm the pipe guy that you didn't know you had. I, a little bit on me before we get to going on this, I guess, I went to school and graduated with civil engineering degree, took off, ran into general contracting for a national firm, doing pretty big projects. The one I was on, before I went residential, was about four hundred million. And then I took off to St. Louis, started doing residential there, was superintendent, and ran between twelve and fifteen million dollars at one given time for the second largest home builder there. So I know how non-tracting goes, I know how big procurement goes. Now, before I left St. Louis to chase the girl, now I'm up in Minnesota doing industrial coatings, thinking of epoxy on garage floor, but for equipment. So I've been talking with Tom, our facility manager, the Graham writers, the USDA reps, speaking up. Did we get Nate on the phone or no?
No, she's not here.
Oh, bummer, okay, well, maybe next meeting. So engineers, contractors, really what I'm here to do is just get everybody up to speed, walk through the problem, different solutions we got, next steps. Should we decide to go forward? And then answer any questions and pass over to Tom. Hopefully everybody got the one-page handout, kind of act as an overview, touch on most of that stuff, if not all of it. Both paragraphs, top and bottom, both points in the middle. Did we get all those?
Yeah.
Awesome, okay. So what we're talking about today, groundwater infiltration to our sanitary sewer lines, that's the biggest problem with this whole thing, there's a lot that goes into that, we'll kind of get into it. But our sanitary sewer lines are for sewage, hooks up to the several businesses and homes throughout the city. But we're getting a lot of groundwater, it's beating up on our systems and our guy that's in charge holding it down. So we went after this in 2018. We did a rehab, a little bit on that, we did about ten thousand linear feet of underground pipe. We did, it's called SIP, C-I-P-P. Cure-in-place pipelining. So think of just an epoxy-soaked balloon that they inflate down these tubes and create another pipe inside that pipe, and they've got about a fifty-year, give or take, lifespan. So we did about ten thousand linear feet of that, different diameters for it, two hundred and thirty feet vertically of manhole work. Minerals, deposits, removal, a hundred and forty sewer laterals up folks' houses. We'll go to this next picture, if I can get this thing to cooperate. So this is a map, you can see kind of right here, this is Courthouse Square, and then we got Main Street, and here's Railroad. All these pink lines are what we did last time. And there's some blue ones in here that are larger dianer pipes that we went ahead and SIP lined too. But I would guesstimate that's probably about thirty percent of the town's collection system, and we're still faltering. I talked with the engineer that did it last time, Lenny. He's the PE that ran the show, and he recommended that we do the entire thing, because Pocahontas has one of the worst systems he's ever seen. Now, I'm inclined to take about a bucket of salt with someone that stands to make a little bit more money in a contractor. But the more and more I dug into this, the more and more I think that unfortunately, he might be right on target with it. So I started to gather data on different things, I've been talking with Tom a lot, Greg is sick of me by now. Every time that we would get a rain event, Tom would start seeing his water flow levels rise about within ten or fifteen minutes. Well, unless everybody's doing the rain dance in their shower and trying to temp fate or flush their toilets all at one time, we shouldn't be seeing anything like that. And if it's on the right day, and the right stars align, we've got hundreds of gallons of sand and sediment that find their way down to wastewater treatment facility. Now, I think, Tom, if I'm wrong, correct me, but that was twenty twenty-four, just last year, and it cost, give or take, ten thousand dollars to get a vac truck in on taxpayer dime to suck all that out of there. And it shouldn't be there in the first place.
You'd be correct. But partially, partially what caused that problem is we hadn't had any rain for like three years. So that sediment builds up into the collection system, and then when you finally get a major water event, it cleans itself. While at that point in time, we got a huge amount of sand in our wet well. So therefore, our influent pump sucked it in, and then the impellers and the water bands inside, you get the sand between them two surfaces, and it works like sandpaper. And as soon as that gap widens up, you lose suction on those pumps. So it's taken us a per year, a year to get replacement parts and in place. And I think that was somewhere around twelve, fifteen thousand dollars for that, wasn't it, Laura?
Yeah, something like that. Right around fifteen.
Yep, so even though we're not seeing hundreds of gallons of sand every time, it doesn't mean that we're not taking wear and tear on these things. Tom, they're twenty-year pumps, am I right? And they just wore out after three years of life?
Yeah, three years, we just, we just wore them down.
So that's seven times as fast, almost, as they're supposed to degrade. So that decreases efficiency. So already, we're pumping stormwater that we shouldn't be. And we're losing efficiency on these pumps, so they're having to work double time to move this water that they shouldn't have to deal with in the first place. So electricity is going through the roof, so now this problem begins to snowball. And so where this problem gets even worse is that it winds up putting Pokey residents at risk, because they have to shoulder the burden of something that could be preventable if we went ahead and knocked this all out. Because there's ninety percent of these lines are under the roadways throughout town. If I, if you can kind of see this map up here still, I mean, they're all underneath those roadways. Makes sense, right? You put a roadway there, you dig a ditch, and then bury it over top with the road. So we start to kind of put the two and two together, while we're getting this sand where it's coming from. It's coming from underneath these roads. So probability of a collapse somewhere is one hundred percent. Is it gonna be tomorrow? We don't know. Is it gonna be the size of a crater? We don't know. Could be the size of a pothole. But that's the thing, it's all underground, so we have no idea what's going on. Now, the one thing that we do have working for us is that we've done this before, so we have a little bit of an idea. But the little bit of idea that we do have is PE from last time saying that this is the worst he's ever seen. He told me that they ended up having to change their grading scale. Now they've got good, very good, poor, very poor, and fair. Well, they, instead of having to do everything, poor and very poor, they changed their scale so that they could throw a couple fairs in there too, and be able to have some differentiation on grading our system. So we're increasing the probability of a road collapse, which is almost sure to be hundreds of thousands of dollars, especially with the way that everything's going between materials and contractors. And then aside from that, it starts to impose health and well-being on people in town. So, and it already has, because I have a town phobia story of a guy that's got a gate valve to prevent backflow into his basement. And again, if I'm not mistaken, the city has already been on the hook for cleaning up somebody's basement to the tune of thirty or forty thousand dollars. So the guy that, and Tom, you said you get calls every once in a while?
When it really gets into a high-flow situation, some people get confused on what sewer coming up in their basement, what's groundwater coming through their walls. And then when our collection system gets clear full, our collection system's working, but it's at full capacity, so you're more apt to have a little bit of standing water in your basement. All depends on the condition of your foundation.
Yep, and if we get full in that collection system, I mean, it's, it acts just like a cup, it's just gonna keep backing up until we eventually do get backup through their lateral into their houses. Am I wrong in saying that, Tom?
That is correct.
So luckily, what we've got here, and I threw, these are very rough numbers, it's not meant to be anything precise. It's more just to give a general idea. Once these things start stacking up, I mean, you know, these costs are pretty negligible. So what we've got is the sand truck that had to back out, the scoping that needs to be done every certain amount of years, the annual electricity increase, treatment materials that we have, the media that we have to put in there, the pump wear and tear, the rentals. So that's all negligible for the most part. We can keep limping things along as long as we got Tom Coop and Garner as our savior here, standing between us and catastrophe. But then what really starts to go out of hand is if we get a rain event, and we'll talk about that a little bit later, it really just starts to skyrocket things. So what's standing between us and something like that, thank the Lord, is sitting right before you. Tom knows the system inside now. He's been working with it since the eighties, he knows it pretty well. And he monitors it like crazy. He told me that during these rain events, he'll get out there and he'll pull manhole covers, he'll check flows, he'll check heights on all this stuff so it doesn't back up into basements, and he'll have to divert things. And if it comes right down to it, he said that he gets cornered and he might have to back up into one person's basement versus ten. It doesn't sound like a very healthy system to me, but on top of that, Tom has stood out in the rain to keep these lift stations, because there's three of them throughout town. Everything rolls downhill, you know the saying. And then these lift stations pick it back up so that it can eventually make its way to the facility, right here, that we should bring this and put Tom Coop and Garner's name on top of. But anyway, these lift stations have internal mechanisms in them so that if they are working overtime, then they will shut themselves down rather than burn out. Well, Tom has stood out above and beyond the call of duty to keep this thing running and manually override and send it into working again so that that collection system doesn't back up into people's basements. So Tom is, I mean, I think it's probably pretty clear that we'd be out to lunch without Tom. But what's to guarantee that his successor is as protective as he is and proactive and knows the system? I mean, I would, I would think that we would want to hand whoever off when Tom decides to hang it up, a system that's held together with more than shoestring and bubble gum. Because if we do get a perfect storm like what happened, I think it was, Tom, you're gonna have to help me with this date a little bit. Last year, three of those pumps almost went down, two of them were offline completely, and one of them went offline right when Tom was headed out of town. Still made his arn art, thankfully, but had to stop by the facility to get it up and running before he split out of town. Help me with that, Tom, what was the actual?
Well, basically, that was when we, we got a huge amount of sand in the wet well, and that's when our pump started sucking that sand in. That little problem started about one o'clock in the morning. We started tearing pumps apart, clear pumps, and luckily, it didn't get into our third pump right away, and we were able to limp through. And with the aid of our stormwater pumps, we could handle the load that were being delivered.
So limp is the perfect word for this whole thing. I mean, if these big costs, that graph that I showed with the monetary cost, if the pump goes down, we've got Four Dodge as our closest savior, and they're gonna take at least a half hour to multiply, so they're an hour and a half. And in the middle of a rainstorm, maybe they're slower than that. And then all of a sudden, we're backing up into people's basements, and we've got one heck of a big bill coming. And we could have gotten in front of this thing from the rip. And we pay that big bill, and the problem still exists. So every day that goes by, this costs more money, because the problem gets worse. Contractors and materials get more expensive. And at the end of the day, we're just throwing bad money after good, fighting this issue at the wrong end, when we could just be done with it. The likelihood that this happens, the truth is, I don't know. I don't know when it's gonna happen, how big it's gonna be, but there's no doubt in my mind that it will happen, and the only way that we'll find out is when the collapse eventually occurs. So we've got, thankfully, a solution on hand. And again, this is a rough number. The verbal quote that we got last time was about three million dollars to take care of this. Now, everything's gotten a lot more expensive, that was seven years ago. So I'm just throwing a figure at it until we get a little bit further down the line and get these engineers in there to study more of it. At about five million dollars. So we look at that, and we've got a very good chance at securing at least five hundred thousand dollars. Or, so the way that USDA looks at this is they prioritize things like this because it has to do with sanitation, which impacts health and well-being of the citizens involved. And so, you know, at the very least, and there's no guarantees in any of this game, so I don't mean to sound that way, but five hundred thousand dollars at the minimum, a million dollars more than likely. And then there, because this stands at the top of the totem pole with the USDA, the USDA rep, and she has no idea what's coming down the line in terms of, you know, Department of Government Efficiency, what they're gonna cut, what they're gonna knock. But right now, she has said that some of these even go up to sixty-five percent coverage, which would mean that we got a jail, get out of jail free card. And now that blue that remains on each one of those eyes, whichever one we look at, is also helped out by the USDA. And we qualify for a low interest rate, so that's two point five percent interest on that loan, and it's amortized over forty years. Now, two point five percent interest, if you're looking at that right next to inflation, that's free money. The government is inflating intentionally at least two and a half percent every year. So we're keeping up with the velocity of money there and getting a scapegoat right out of jail free. And there's not gonna be any time, any better time than right now with any of that stuff, being that the whole thing is degrading consistently and the price is just rising. So if we choose to, the next steps, what Laura and I have put together already with the help of Mary Jo, is a preliminary engineering report. It's called a CERT grant. So the USDA will get on the hook with us, we have, it's an application, and none of that stuff's guaranteed. But we've put together that CERT grant, that's been turned in. Now that that's into USDA, I'm getting in touch with, I've gotten, I've touched base with three different engineers. ISG, who did this the first go-around, and the SEH out of Mason City, and then a couple more in Iowa, and I want to get some national guys in there too, to see if we can't get a little more competitive. But put those contractors together, and then get that preliminary engineering report done, that will give us our scope of work. Basically tells us this is what needs to be done, and engineers stamp on it, so the government trusts that. And then once we've gotten that report... And then, once we've gotten that report, then we can go to the contractors and the USDA, basically simultaneously, and say, so contractors is what we need to cover, and we turn our report into the USDA. Once we get our approval from that, then we turn right around to the contractors after it goes in front of council, and you guys decide. Cause I can put apples to apples for all these applications and say, um, with all their bids and procurement and all that, and then turn it into you guys. And then, upon that, then we accept and go forward with USDA and get this knock and taken care of, uh, once and for all, and transition into a new collection system. So, that's pretty much the gist of it. If anybody's got any questions, I can jot down the ones for Dana and get back to you if it has anything to do with funding. Otherwise, our resident expert, Tom, is ready and willing to speak up about any of the technical stuff.
That is a program we did seven years ago. The special address can prove my dinner.
It's kinda hard to tell, cause you don't know how, you just don't know what would've come either way. Uh, I'm sure it has helped greatly. Now, one thing you do wanna realize, it was slip lining, okay? The water that is in the ground is under pressure. If it can't get into the water main, and you're close to somebody's residential service line, it will go to the service line. So, it's, you're not gonna stop all, all your groundwater from ever getting into your system unless you even did every house, which is not feasible. But my biggest concern is either collapses, uh, the amount of dirt, sand that we're getting into our system, and it's wearing out our equipment rapidly as far as our pumps. Plus, just the load that it puts on everybody's house that slows down their services. You know, and Ben approached me with this, he says, I'm looking for places for a grant. I says, well, we've got a huge need here, if it works, it would be wonderful for our.
Is there any way to tell if it, if there's any, say, any stormwater tied into sewer water, or has that already been?
Well, we've gone through the years past, uh, all the cross connections and all that have all been sealed because there you're dealing with regulations with the state.
What about, uh, people dumping their some, their?
We've done two stormwater inspections where we physically went to every home in town and checked. I think for the most part, our people are in pretty good shape on that.
But this would be similar to what we did seven years ago.
Yeah, it'd be basically the same thing, it'd just be going a little bit farther.
Yep.
Our manholes, uh, I talked to rehab systems in Cherokee. Now, Grant, anytime you're dealing with grants, you gotta go through an engineer. But they do a fabulous job with grouting, which is putting the cement back in between the bricks and over the bricks to seal it back up. He says, if he didn't have to go through a grant or an engineer, he says, I could save you a horrendous amount of money on that end. But I don't see that happening because the D N R and the state are.
How was it funded last time?
I think part of it is that Avila, that money that we all avail up. All the minutes were right around stuff going on with waste treatment.
That's what I'm calling every year.
There had to be some federal money, because when I did it, I had to, I built a building for him, and I had to follow federal, federal rules.
I don't remember where it came from for sure. But I'm sure, is, what did we take out, how, you remember how, I don't remember how much it was.
I think we spent like one point one million the first of I heard you right, probably first go around. It probably took out a Geo bond, um.
I can check and look, I'd have to go back to seventeen. I haven't looked back that far, so yeah. I can't, I go back and look in the minutes.
Yeah, we could get some kind of a grant. Get as much down as you can, man.
Yep.
So, what's our next step here then?
So, it's gonna be, we've got the CERT grant applied for, and now we need to get in front of engineers. So, those are the three firms that I've reached out to. Lenny is the one that did it last time, he was the P E that was riding the helm. So, he's gonna be one of them, and then we'll try and get about five, whittle it down to three, the USDA requires three. Then, we turn those preliminary engineering reports into, um, into the USDA. And then, see if we can't get that funding, get it all paid for.
Then you bid out the job, the, the physical slip lining.
Correct, yep. So, first, we gotta get the engineers, then we get the contractors. The engineers tell us what the contractors have to do, and the government is what mandates that first step. It's gotta all be engineered first off.
But we're getting a CERT grant for the engineering event, right?
Right, and the feedback that I've gotten from, uh, Dana, our USDA rep there at a storm lake, is that more than likely, it would be fully covered, they're typically in the ballpark of thirty thousand dollars. So, and that's, and she said that's what it caps out at for them, but there is additional funding that they can generally get to go behind, especially for a project like this.
Okay, then, anything else right now we need to?
Do you need anything else, Ben?
No, uh, I'll just keep gathering everything, putting it all together, and then we'll set up another meeting, and I'll put in front of you one side on one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good, thanks.
Thanks, guys, have a great day, appreciate your time.
Okay, moving on, uh, discuss the flurry estate purchase agreement? Mr. Busky, are you? Wanted to present?
Hello?
They have amended resolution to a few lines.
Sure. Short suite, the prior purchase agreement basically provided for an escrow, the warranty, the quick claim deed. And I had kinda run into, on the buyer's side, a few concerns with that at the outset, just because of the restrictions that were placed on that, immediate formality of the escrow. So, um, I think Laura reached out to me saying that she had some concerns and maybe wanted a different idea or concept to move forward with. I work with Mike Abord, he's kind of the real estate guru for north half of Iowa, lot of Iowa. And, uh, he and I kinda walked through this, and we came up with this concept, it's called right of reverter. So, I took your purchase agreement, um, I took the most important aspects of it. So, for example, the condition of the property is the same, uh, the buyer's still, uh, responsible for the abstract. I did put a warranty deed in there, I think that a warranty deed is something we should be giving our buyers. The difference between a warranty deed and a quick claim deed, quick claim deed says, hey, whatever ownership I have, I'm going to give to you. Um, warranty deed's saying, we do have some responsibility to provide you with good title. I think with the investment of the folks out there, I would think that they would want to warranty deed. That's one, one major concept that I've kind of brought up to a lot of the buyers that I've worked with. So, if you kinda get into, um, to the page three, I added severability. The severability clause says, hey, if there's anything that's unconstitutional, this doesn't invalidate the entire agreement. Eighteen talks about a right to record the purchase agreement. Um, I did this based on the language that I intended placed within the deed. And then, the survivability clause, which says, hey, just because we closed this, um, this sale, doesn't mean that the per, the terms of the purchase agreement aren't, um, still in play. So, the way I understand, um, the city's concept here was that they necessarily wanna restrict the ownership of the lot, but more so wanted to confirm that those who are building, um, the houses out there did so in accordance with the other houses. I think there's a lot of reasons for that, whether it's, um, just the values and inconsistency with the project, the type of projects, those kind of things. So, I left that, uh, twenty special provisions, I left that the same. So, then you get to exhibit A, which should look familiar to all of you. Those are what I would call restrictive covenants. Typically, when you plot a subdivision, you don't go through this. You typically have, like, covenants, homeowners associations, those kind of things, which are, um, they would have a meeting just like this. And they would determine what can or cannot happen within the subdivision. The only change I made to this is number twenty. This is fairly consistent with nuisance laws, and it just talks about litter vehicles, uh, placed or parked outdoors, um, and current registration. So, any vehicles that are just sitting around should have current registration. That's one way to ensure that we don't have folks out there with a whole bunch of, uh, vehicles just sitting around. Uh, so then you get to the language, which I intend to include in the deed. Hopefully, you've had the time to kind of read this. But the short and sweet of it is, we're gonna convey the property to the seller, or the buyer, excuse me. The buyer's gonna have an opportunity to record the deed with this language in it, okay? And they're gonna include both exhibit B and exhibit A with those deeds. And so, in the event that they choose to not follow along with the, what I would call the covenants, property can revert back to the city, okay? And so, instead of it being like a hard and fast rule, I put in there a hundred and eighty days. I wasn't really sure on a timeframe or a timeline for reasonableness. I know in Algonquin, for example, there's a subdivision, uh, specifically said, no metal roofs. So, they put a metal roof on, they, they weren't allowed to sell it, they had to go in and then put asphalt or something that looked like that on there. And then, if you look at that third paragraph, that's kind of the idea behind the right of reverter. And I, I put in there public policy planning objections, or objectives and development goals. And then, the last one is, uh, basically what we would call a covenant running with the land. So, that means that all of those who would buy this house, whether it's the current owner or potential owners, still have the responsibility to follow through with the terms on, uh, exhibit A. So, the issue, if you haven't heard, is, um, to receive financing out there, um, we've been very lucky with most of the people that have been out there. Either they've had a different circumstance, or they haven't needed deed, or a title, they need to show ownership for a construction loan. And so, most traditional banks will say, you have to show ownership in the lot at least, they'll do an open-end mortgage or a construction loan, build it, and then they'll do a final mortgage on it after that. Well, if you don't have title on the property because the deed's never been recorded, uh, and it was informally held in escrow, the banks were like, we can't really just loan you money on this theory that you do own it. So, this is, uh, I guess, a proposal, if you will, I think this is a good way to work through it. I don't know that there's a perfect answer. I know what your concept is, um, but I think that's why typically when you plot a subdivision, you have covenants. But that's not to say that those covenants aren't ever broken in other areas either. I mean, if you can go to most subdivisions and you'll see something, whether there's a little, uh, you know, a little shed out back, or there's something against the side of the house, or a different color, or, um, those kind of things. It's not uncommon, but I think this will at least promote the overall idea, that it's kinda up to the city to make sure that they're being enforced. I mean, as people are building, I think we need to be present out there and ensure that what's happening is what's, what's being bargained for. You guys have any questions?
Hey, Ryan, can I maybe talk to you tomorrow or something, just call you up? Cause I just have a question on the enforcement side of it, but not for you, I just wanna, so I understand, cause when we're redoing our code, maybe that's something we maybe wanna put in line with the city.
Sure, and, so, uh, I, I reached out to, um, Avila on, uh, the higher ups just to kinda see if they would, you know, essentially pass, this would pass muster to get a loan, and they said that they would. So, it says, and then I also have language in there that will release it, so it's kind of like a mortgage. You know, so they're gonna build this house, and then they're going to want that right of reverter released so that it doesn't place a restriction on title. And so, I think that's a good thing too. But we just have to present through the process, and if you see something, or somebody says something that's not cohesive here, then we're gonna have to enforce it. If they choose not to enforce it, then title reverts back to the city.
So, it's your recommendation to adopt this? Did I miss the Greg White, the meeting with Greg King, cause it sounds like that was part of his issue?
Well, I think discrimination's probably hard and fast work. I don't, I, I don't mean that the traditional sense. But like I said, I think you've been very lucky with some of the people that have filled out there that maybe didn't need traditional financing. Maybe they had another asset for collateral, or they were doing a bridge, or whatever it may be. But as the, the rest of the division gets filled up, you're going to have people who are going to need money outside of just the lot to build the house. And, um, without a title to it, they're not gonna get along.
That was the whole issue.
Right.
So, how do we go about adjusting that then?
Issue would adopt this.
You just adopt this.
Adopt this whole thing? It basically reads what we already have, it's just a, changing the deed, working on it essentially.
So, yeah, so, in essence, the way I pictured it in the very basic format is you guys would have a closing here, somebody shows up with thirty grand, they say, I want lot twenty-one. Those two sign off on it, and they throw it in their desperate. That's what we were doing before, until the house is built, and somebody went out there and said, okay, it meets with all of these elements that we put out there. Now, it's going to be, okay, here's your deed, take it to the courthouse, but attached to the deed will be the restrictions and the right of reverter language. And, um, we have an obligation to follow through with those, and we have an obligation at the city level to ensure that they are. And when they're done building the house, we need to release that language if they follow through with those obligations, yeah.
So, really, we almost need a building inspector to kinda make sure everybody's following the rules. Yeah, to take the.
My ability's gonna be on us, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to, like I said, there's really no perfect answer, you know, whether it was a covenant that was originally part of the plat and subdivision, whether it was the way Eric had done it before, or whether it's this way, somebody's gonna have to bring it up and say, okay, that's not a three-car garage, or whatever, you know, whatever the issue is, and say, this is something that we need to enforce.
And that's, and that's what I wanna try to sort out, because it'd be maybe something we need to put a language in our code as well, to refer to these.
Right, some of the covenants deals directly with the building process, and then some of the covenants deal with, you know, what might be considered a nuisance, or, or those things which would be after the building process. My biggest issue is to make sure that we have housing that conforms to this, so that way, everybody has a secure investment out there. We don't want three white houses and this three-story pink house out there, and being like, okay, so what do we do? And it, you know, he values everybody's investment out there.
So, what an interesting house.
So, now, this resolution, we have to pick a date and have a hearing and update that too, right?
Iowa title standards are what attorneys and abstractors use to determine whether or not there is good marketable title. And when a city passes title to buyers, we have title standards that deal directly with that. And the one thing that we generally focus on as attorneys is whether or not there's a resolution and whether there is public notice. And the Iowa title standards say that there has to be an affidavit filed at the reporter's office that has the resolution and proof of notice. So far, what I've seen is that the affidavit is there, but there's no proof of notice. So, I've asked, Laura and I've been working on it, to file an amendment for the ones that have already been done. And for those who are gonna do in the future, to make sure that we adhere to that rule. I mean, from your guys' perspective, the most important thing you're doing is giving your citizens notice of what you're doing. And that's how attorneys and banks rely on marketable title.
So, when is, was that, that, you look back, how far?
The.
This says twenty twenty-three. This says twenty twenty-three, and it was signed in December twenty-eighth of twenty-three.
I think I've done like five or six title opinions now. And she can show, I think it's like the fourth line from the bottom, isn't it, say on there that it's supposed to be part of this? So if you read the second where it asks from the bottom there, that's why they put that in there is to adhere to the Title Standards, and it says that a public notice is supposed to be affixed to that document. And so, to basically the examiner's knowledge, you guys had a meeting, and you guys agreed, but it doesn't show that you guys gave the public any notice as to who gets the lots, or in terms of the lots, or anything like that. And I can provide that Title Standard to you too. I've done that in the past with some other communities I've worked with. But generally, it's just the common notice procedure at the city level. I think it's two consecutive notice periods, and then I think you affix it to like the front door of the...
This is saying that we never gave notice when we posted like pricing in the, of the lots, that we're saying?
There's, so this is what shows up in the abstract, this right here. It says, or that's the amended one, the original one just said resolution, and it just shows up in the abstract as there being a resolution. But there's supposed to be a public notice from the newspaper that says that so-and-so published notice in the local newspaper on these consecutive dates, and they sign off on it. There's a certification showing that it was, you know, done correctly. I'm not saying notice was not given, I firmly believe that notice was given. I don't know that the document was prepared or recorded correctly. Is that, is that, sorry, did we say that?
Cause it did, they were all posted in the paper, but this was not included.
But it wasn't, it didn't translate all the way through there.
Okay.
Well, it took us six months or longer, it could have all...
Nah, it seemed like longer than that.
Well, it could have been, but it took forever, I don't know.
How, I, that's my question, how far back did you go on some of those previous that were sold? Has had any of them had?
Since I've started looking at the abstracts, the first one I saw was in October. None of them have had it, and we've...
But have you, did you go back and look at Phase One?
So my abstract only shows the entries that I examined, I didn't actually pull any of the records, so.
I can tell you that, hopefully, Phase One, it was included. There was a specific resolution, or a specific resolution that cited the covenants, and was laid out in Iowa Title Standard.
So it, it got done in Phase?
It got done in Phase One, it did not get done in Phase Two. Sorry, Dave.
So what action is needed now then, for us?
Don't, that Laura and I have got pretty good jump on it. It's just getting the actual notice from the, I would assume the Record Democrat, and then we just need to file an amended document, which probably costs twenty-two dollars to record something like that. And then it will be fine, and then we just need to make sure moving forward that we do the same thing, so.
Yeah, definitely.
It can't be easily handled.
Well, yes, yes, it's, it's kind of nitpicky, I suppose, but in my opinion, notice to the citizens is probably one of the most important things that we're responsible for. And I just don't want people to have any reason, after the investment that they're putting out there, to, you know, have concern about title.
So then, from here, you guys will handle the next step of it, and then, does it have to get posted?
As long as you guys approve his new verbiage on the purchase agreement, then we can set up a date to approve the amended, and then it all gets set up in the paper and updated, right?
I don't, I don't think that needs to be amended, I think the document just needs to have... We just need to call the Record Democrat and have them provide us with their little, to have a certification that it was published. And we need to, on my, have whoever signed the original document in their capacities re-sign it, and then I'll just refile it. I don't know, notice was, notice was fine, it's just the document that was submitted was incorrect. So I don't feel like another resolution needs to be, it just needs to be followed through. We can do that very simply.
So if everybody's okay with his verbiage, then that's, that's the main thing for this. It's his purchase agreement, the way we changed, the way he changed the deed.
Right.
The right to reverter, all that. So if you're okay with that, that's...
We just need to make a motion.
I'd make a motion, you go with Ryan's.
Okay.
Purchase agreement?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Moving to Second, go with...
Changing the purchase.
Kenny Ryan Buskey, change in purchase three.
Next is the purchase agreement, this was brought to me by Tom. I just threw some numbers in here, and of course, Ryan put this together. Possible purchase of the park next to Pocahontas. Because a lease is not going to fix our concerns that we have for events happening during heritage days. So I just threw up this number, this is based on the taxable price of those two lots, and then I rounded up just over a bit, like by twelve hundred bucks.
So we spoke with Pocahontas State, like they were gonna sell it, or?
Yeah, he stopped me on the street one day, and he wanted to know what we wanted to offer, that you want to get rid of it. He just wants to have it prepared when he goes to the board meeting, so he can present it to the board, and let them decide.
So Ryan wrote it all up, the only thing I came up with really was the numbers. So you tell me if that's too much, too little, I don't, I don't buy land every day.
Where is that?
Second paragraph, maybe, or purchase price, number one.
A dollar donation is not discussed.
No, no, it was not.
So he didn't come up with the price?
No. They would not, so I just took the taxable off me. So I don't know, ten thousand's too much, too little, you guys have to tell me.
It does help. So you have a gazebo on it?
I don't, that's the thing, is we'd have to take everything down, like, you know. Everything has to come off of there if we don't find it. It goes back to just grass, and then we'd, whoever's gonna maintain it, probably fall back on that.
So he didn't say any amount?
No, he said, you guys decide, is what he told me, basically. So he has something to present to his board.
Should we go five?
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with whatever you guys come up with.
I understand some of the value in some of the stuff, but like, I think five thousand dollars is plenty fair for a new lot. There's other empty lots that some of those, you know, I don't know. I just think that paying full ten thousand is probably a little too much.
Technically, it's two lots, but yes, whatever you wanna. You think five for both of them?
I just offered five.
So that's, that is ten thousand for lots?
No.
No, ten thousand total.
Ten thousand total, yep.
Cause one's like seventy-four, and the other's twenty-six, or something like that.
I believe there's two lots there.
There's two, cause there used to be two lots in Brooklyn.
Yeah, normally, there's a lot of buildings that are twenty-five foot wide and a hundred foot deep.
This is, I bet it's more narrow. I bet it's more narrow.
Yeah, they're all narrow.
Yeah, oh, it's a hundred feet, I mean, it goes all the way to the...
It's an alley, yeah. But I meant north and south, probably fifty foot.
So you wanna drop that to five?
For the whole shooting match.
Okay. If you're okay with that, we can present that, I'll just change that number.
Need a motion, huh? I'll make a motion to offer five thousand for the lots owned by Pocahontas State.
So that he's gonna turn it into his board? And then I'll either okay it or...
Yeah. And it's the family that owns the bank, so.
Yeah.
Motion made, I have second. Moving to Second, two, offer five thousand.
Nine thousand for both lots.
Which park is that?
Heritage, the one with the gazebo, next to the mural.
Yeah, I know. I had trouble.
Okay, so we got that. Next thing, or we better vote. Okay.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Going to a block party, huh?
Yeah, next one is a block party, this is for one fifty-fifth, this came from Parker. They have to have acknowledged that it's been approved by the city. Apparently, we're adding one more block maybe than we did in the past. Maybe this block C down here. Yes. That's, he made it sound like that was the only difference, I had not been around, so I don't...
Parker has run, has run it all by me, so I don't see any major implications, or any major problems with it, so. And the big thing is, obviously, needs council approval, so if they get the Graham shop and all that other stuff started, it's...
I'll make the motion to approve the parking and road closures for heritage days. Is that, so when is, is this for the whole weekend?
He's got it all set out, but the, so, but for the most part, the roads are just planned on being closed.
For?
For them.
All weekend?
For the whole weekend.
The whole weekend? Thursday, Thursday, Sunday.
Yeah.
Does that, that close, that C down there, does that affect getting used to it much, or?
The only one that, that again will open and close, whether it's gonna be kind of intermittent, is the one by the courthouse. The one on Main Street, that's for that second, but other than that, because they're gonna close it after the parade. Cause the parade's gonna come through there, so.
Like C, that parade comes through there too, doesn't it? They'll, they'll be opening and closing too.
But everything else has been the same thing we've done for the twenty-ten year year.
Okay, next is, we need to talk about the playground equipment. It is up over there at Discovery, they do not have the mat in the bottom yet, that's the last thing.
Rock and a mat.
The rock and the mat. So James wanted me to read this little paragraph to you because he can't be there, so bear with me. Good afternoon, city council members, I'm sorry I cannot be there in person to present this with Laura. All of you know the city, the school, and the hospital have a twenty-eight D agreement as owners of the daycare since oh-eight. As you probably also know, now we have a playground equipment ruled unusable by the state last fall, and we are in the process of getting it replaced, and the project should be done in the next two weeks. The cost is eighty-six thousand. We would only like to use our daycare savings to pay for no more than half the project, just so we still have some reserves. So far, we have ten thousand from Poco Foundation, twelve thousand five hundred from the hospital foundation. We also have a commitment of fifteen hundred from UBI, and have paperwork filled out at Avila Bank Scholarship. I'm also in the process of talking to school officials to, for their contribu- contribution as well. The document I passed out tells the story of Discovery Daycare and our playground equipment. We've, we've seen that document. Thanks for any help you can provide. So, I have worked with Cindy Murphy, and we have hotel motel tax, that that's what this is for, that extra one percent tax levy that went into play, I don't know how long ago. But we have fourteen thousand nine seventy-five eighty-seven.
That's our share, or that's how much we have?
That's what we can give to the daycare.
Can we match what the hospital gave?
It's up to you, if you want to do twelve-five.
How much is the total, they're still waiting on some grants, right?
Yeah, they're still waiting on grants, last I knew, there's a forty thousand dollar bill up there waiting to pay.
We don't exactly know what is left, the balance is left.
Last I knew, it was fifty-five.
But we don't know that.
But that's before the ten and the twelve, but yeah.
Yeah, but we don't know if there's any more grants coming.
Right, or the, yeah, so how would we know?
And is that, and is that with the daycare paying any of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've already paid.
They don't pay what half, forty thousand.
Yeah, the thing is, he's gonna get as many grants and donations as he can, and then he may use the revolving loan fund, because the interest is so low, which would be money from the city again, but they would pay it back. Where this one, they don't have to pay.
So they just want a commitment for us in case they need it, is what you're saying?
Oh, no, he wants to count on us like right now.
What other things do we use that hotel models are paying for?
Like when the Rialto needed a heater or air conditioning or something in a roof.
Fire fighters for their air packs sometimes, like we do their packs sometimes, uh...
I just know the Rialto.
Cause that's right before you were here.
Yeah.
The hospital's twelve-five, you said? I think we should go that route.
The same as the hospital's.
Okay, all right, that's fine. All right. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to get all five to the Discovery Daycare.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, all five to the daycare? Playground equipment? I showed her with playground equipment.
So, yeah, I think you're right, too.
I think I was tall.
That's what he talked about.
I approve the agenda, I don't know if we ever did the consent.
I don't think we did, or we didn't. So does somebody want to?
Prove consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Moving to Second, approve consent agenda? Is that here?
Aye, got it.
Okay, moving on. Our twenty-eight D hospital sharing. And just real quick, John Jamison is here as the mayor pro town, and Hillary Reed, the city manager, Lorenz is also here. Just, cause I don't know if everybody knows who they are, so.
Okay. With that in mind, I'd like to make an opening statement here as far as things that I see on this thing. First of all, cooperation to benefit both communities. We have streams of resources that we have to be very diligent about, and it seems that operating this way to help out that community and us is certainly something that's worth looking into. Liability issues were addressed the last time, and we've come to find out that liability issues have been sanctioned as such, as, as being taken care of. There is also an opt-out after ninety days in cases doesn't work, and we need to see a change. So we have those possibilities. Also, with the police chief and his problem solving and positive solutions, I greatly admire the chief, Chief Lou, and, and what he's come up with here, and trying to work toward a, an agreeable end for us. I know the other smaller communities, after going to some of their meetings up there, are, I'm not sure what they're gonna do. And I hope that we never get in that position, that we're, or in a similar, similar position. The sheriff's office doesn't seem to want to have a little more give and take on that. I don't know what their position is, but their contention is that we should be paying, or those towns should be paying more for the covenants than what we're being asked to now. So I don't know how that would be resolved. But in any case, with, with our present police chief, his abilities to get things done like this, which he's proven time and again, I, I want to spin a positive. Outcome on this particular agreement.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
So liability on the officers from Pocahontas, right? If you're, I checked this out twice and verified it again the day. So if there, if Alex goes over there, or one of the officers, even if they get in to Lorenz's car, the liability, if he gets hurt, the liability is Pocahontas. If he's in Lorenz's car, and Lorenz's car gets hurt, of course, it's Lorenz. Same with the officers, it will be Pocahontas's liability. So stating that, I think that the money that Lorenz is willing to pay, just, just in case something happens, is too low. It'll only take one instance and it'll chew up that forty thousand for all I'm counting.
More than forty thousand.
What is it?
It's actually, cause that's what Laura, we made the same forty thousand. It's half of all my benefits, half of it.
So what is that number?
Again, that's up to Laura to come up with.
It's gonna change.
We've always been using forty thousand as the, as the.
My point still stands, right? Half of what you have is still very low if, if someone gets hurt over there.
The, the problem is, is that, so remember it has to be that way because like work comp, you know, then we would have to be, we would have to be dual employed.
Right.
And so that's, that's, so then it becomes very difficult in the fact that once you try to push a dual employment. You know, and that's not something that is done. That's not something that's at the state of, I mean, you don't see that.
That was the, the other point I was gonna say. They said the only way Lorenz is liable, in case someone gets hurt, it has to be employed by Lorenz.
Right, and so, I mean, and like you said, and that's when we had our meeting, that's what we discussed that through, but for all of that. And that's what we pay for the insurance for. And like you said, it doesn't change our insurance payments to do this. It doesn't change any of that. So it doesn't come out of our budget. I mean, it, it absolutely is just a general operation. So I don't see where you say that there's gonna be extra money because the insurance policy covers us.
I guess the only thing that I would be nervous on that is, and I'm not saying that anybody's wrong or right in this. But if we're expanding our coverage area, I would assume that our insurance premium would have to increase in some manner.
No, it's just police operations. It's just a general fee based upon their, based upon the number of officers.
So if someone, if someone gets hurt over there, won't the premiums?
No. Well, I, well, that's, I, I can't, I don't, I would say no. I mean, again, i- in any of that stuff, I've never seen that adjust. I've never seen, cause normally it's a standard set for the state of Iowa. But, so that's not the case. So it doesn't cost us anymore to, um, that's just police operations. So I mean, so if the sheriff's office, which has no duty in any town, when they pick up a town under contract, it doesn't change their insurance policy. Because it's just considered part of the duty because you've signed a mutual aid agreement. It's just because the law says. It, it has to fund a lot like work comp, for instance. You don't wanna keep flipping back and forth.
I just don't like the liability of going over there for the little, the little amount of money we are receiving.
Can I interject something on that? Um, I'm Hillary. I don't know if you could see me sitting over there. Um, so one of the things I have to that is, um, one of the, one of the questions, if. Let me back up. One of the first things we always state when we hire police officers is the camaraderie that Pocahontas County has within its law enforcement. Babe. Pardon?
I believe it's had.
Um, I've heard differently.
Okay.
Um, but anyway, um. No matter what, you don't even have to call dispatch for backup. I mean, the, they've got your six immediately. That's something that has always been stated since I've been in the, in my position. Um, so my question is, is if one of your officers or one of my officers is over here or there or the county's in mine. Your liability is still the same. It's the same with the fire department. When you call for mutual aid, it's the same. I mean, and if you are worried about an expense or a work comp expense or if something brutal should happen. I don't think that, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't think that the city would have any qualms about reimbursing you for your expenses. I mean.
And I mean, that's fine, but, and, and I'm not saying like I'm against it, but like a handshake agreement, you're saying that you will cover it, doesn't.
We've already, we, at the meeting we had with, uh, Mr. Jamison, Cody, uh, Mr. Gruber and Alex and Lauren Booth, uh, one of our, another one of our council members. We already talked about adding, um, a memorandum of understanding to the twenty eight E and then, uh, for situations like this. Um, so we're able to address that and as if certain things come up, we can, we can add that to that as well.
So you spoke about adding this issue of like compensation on a liability situation to it or just adding to it that you can adjust the twenty eight E?
We've already, we, uh, this is the first concern of this that I've really heard.
Yep, yep.
So I mean, I, we would have no issues adding anything like that to the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
To the end of it.
And, and that's what makes me nervous about a little bit too, is the, the ninety days on it. Like I, I want to work with Lorenz. I wanna figure out some way to make some, like, I'm not. Any of my, might seem like negative comments aren't negative because I don't want this to work out. I just want to make sure that if I'm agreeing to something, I understand it a hundred percent. And we have as much black and white, not gray areas covered.
And, and I'm the same way. It's not like I'm against it. I just, I just will look out for Pocahontas first.
And we, we would not expect anything less.
Yeah.
We want, didn't I, didn't I read somewhere though, we can give ninety days notice if we feel to break it.
So it's not like, oh, we decided today, we're out. I mean, we, there's a timeline in there where we have to extend and make sure it's going.
So would all that have to be in that agreement before we vote on it?
And then to be honest with you, the ninety days makes me a little bit nervous if we have to give ninety days and it's ninety days, cause it's not working out. We can't get two police officers hired in Lorenz. Cause that's what makes me nervous right now, is not having any police officers in Lorenz. How are we gonna cover at the moment without spreading ourself?
It's twenty, it's just twenty-one hours and I know I keep saying that, and I know that, but I can promise you, if you look at the call logs, if you actually look. At the computerated dispatch that comes out of, I mean, and even what was posted today online, you can go through there, what was posted earlier. And even look, Lorenz had like fourteen calls and of that, like three were of like, where there was actually substance, like a report was taken. That was it.
But if there was a call, where does that officer come from? If there isn't an officer perhaps, if, if there isn't an officer in Lorenz.
Well, they would come up, so we would answer that call.
We would have to leave.
So our guys are not patrolling over there at all? They're just answering calls?
They would if there's, we, we have to give them twenty-one hours of service.
Yeah.
So.
But that counts as admin work counts as that.
And then my admin work also counts as that. So doing the chief role, you know, so as I'm trying to prepare, you know, we've got one potential hire. But I've gotta wait until the June academy meeting on, you know, and those things. That time also eats off of that twenty-one hours. And then I have to, well, we have to log every inch of that, so.
Yeah.
So it's, again, twenty-one hours is a lot of different, means a lot of different things. At the end of the day, we would just hold Lorenz to make sure that we'd have twenty-one hours of work, whatever that is.
So if you do end up getting two officers hired over there and that would cover how many hours?
So that would cover, so they would be, so two hours and forty-two hours a week, so that would be eighty-four hours a week that they would then providing their own coverage.
So then who covers the rest of those hours?
And then we would be taking the calls in the outside time and then that, that twenty, well, and it still would be twenty-one hours. But once I have officers there, there would be more chief responsibilities too. Like, I mean, right now, you know, officer's calling me, those types of things. Those would also all. Pull down off that twenty. Right.
So then.
But if, if there's a call in Lorenz and there's nobody, we're gonna just send one of our officers from Pocahontas?
So then that gets back to the liability. Where does the liability start?
It's from.
It's all us.
It's always us.
It's all us.
It's all us.
It doesn't matter when, it's a hundred percent.
He gets in the car wrecked, is that why?
Yep. And, and it's, and it's right now, today. It's still, it's that same theory. So if we respond to them on a market, or like the other day when I had to go to Fonda or I had to go, you know.
You back up the county would be the exact.
Yeah, and when I, yeah, when I back up the county and Rolf, Rolf isn't gonna, or the county isn't gonna pay our bills. It's because I've been requested it's our mutual aid. So it doesn't.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it, it doesn't change our liability because it's all just one standard set of police operations.
How did you decide on two officers, not three?
So, so, because three, so they normally always had three. So the chief, you're reducing it half time. So then it lifts the pay rates on both sides. You see how that, so they're lowering our burden on the Pocahontas side so that we can hopefully increase our retention. Increase that one side, basically providing an efficiency for the number of calls we are taking. And on the same side, it provides Lorenz, again, they're not paying the chief fully, so then they can put that money into those officers. And then hopefully increase retention, which is our, our ultimate goal and the biggest benefit is retention. And I've said that a thousand times through this.
So say after ninety days, so they're gonna get, our officers are gonna get a raise.
Yes.
After ninety days, this goes, falls, doesn't work out, whatever, what, say a year, whatever we decide to. Where is that money gonna come from for that?
That's what I'm talking about. Actually, Tom is, and I've already talked about that.
It's, it's set up in our, our budget. It's separate.
Right.
So if that went in, that money would go away.
Yes.
So that, so their increase in wages.
That ten thousand dollars will, will disappear.
But they're, they're gonna get a, they're gonna cut, get a cut pay.
That's, exactly, but we'll be doing, we won't have.
We won't be doing.
We won't be on Lorenz, so.
Yeah, but where all them officers know that.
Um, well, they're both standing right there, so.
Talking about new ones.
Well, yeah, no, absolutely. That is always part of, and like I said, even the four that I've had, they all know.
But if they're, if we're fully staffed and they're fully staffed, should our officers be even going to Lorenz?
Well, because you're caught, so again, to.
So will, will they need to?
Yes, they will, because there's gonna be times when those officers aren't on. And remember, in the same regard, those Lorenz officers, I've already had two weekends now where we ran short. We didn't have enough to cover our site. That doesn't mean to freak out about that, and I'm not saying that as a native. But now I can call and I can say, hey, Lorenz officer, I need you to cover Pocahontas and Lorenz.
How, how often are we without an officer?
So far, two times this year. And we had an officer. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, no, I get that. I, there's officer, but nobody was actually on.
That's my biggest fear though, is getting these positions filled because there's two positions over there that needs to be, need to be filled and one here needs to be.
I, if everything goes what I hope to go, because there's some, there's some things I can't control, like the academy and stuff like that. We should have all positions filled. I have one potential delay because one of the, one of the young men who has not been able to pass the run yet. Is also then going to be going off, has joined the military and will be going off on the boot camp. So it looks like we're probably gonna miss that. So he's gonna go to his boot camp. Well, again, I'm not saying I'm holding the position for him, but on the same regard, you know, as we try to find, that's, that's one of my variables that I have to deal with, right? So, and at this point, as I will point out to the council, I'm already working six shifts for one extra. So you're not paying for another officer on top of it. I mean, I'm just gonna point that, that's what I've done for the city. I saved the city hundreds of thousands of dollars because of the way I do it, which was never done before. Trust me, it was never done.
And like, I appreciate that. That just also makes me nervous on, taking on more work.
But that's also for Pocahontas.
Yeah.
Right, well, that's for Pocahontas. But it really, like I said, there's plenty of, yes, I'm busy, but yet it's not, like I said. You're adding potentially up to one call a day is all you're adding. Statistically, that is proven scientific fact.
My thing of the, the nine, so the ninety day cancellation is that ninety days from whenever we give notice and we have to cover for ninety days. What makes me nervous is we get into this two months and we say, it's not working out. We're gonna cancel. We have to cover ninety days. I never want the city of Pocahontas to be without an officer when, if possible, when we have school exception. That's what makes me nervous.
Again, I don't wanna go through police here and I talked to the mayor about this. I'm not gonna go through how I do my, but I can promise you gentlemen, this stuff is already worked out. But we're not, I don't wanna do any discussions about how, I mean, who, when, where. But I can promise you, that is not an issue.
Okay.
You have to either trust in me or not trust in me, and I can promise you, that is handled.
And at some point, we have to trust our police chief to do the best thing for our police.
So I know, uh, your boss is sitting here. What do you guys feel about this whole thing? You don't have to say anything.
Um, I wanna get paid more.
Yeah.
I'm nervous too, but I, I want more money.
But you don't, to have Lorenz covered more, you don't take a third officer and Lorenz would be feasible.
At this point, I don't, because then again, now we're leveraging more money out that's not already there. Again, Lorenz has a lower tax base because of, I mean, lost population. We all have lost population, right? So I mean, those are the numbers that I looked at, you know, when we talked about this. So, and with those two officers there. But the other thing, and again, I don't wanna get too deep into police operations, cause I think it gets confusing to people, is that. We work a twelve hour shift, so you're gonna have, oh, and like you said, we said one to one and one to one. And I don't know what it's finally gonna be depending on what the calls are looking like and how things can shift. But remember, that puts an officer on every day and gives them every other weekend, just like we do. It actually teams them up with, so Mason and Josh are on kind of a team, I guess, would be a way to put it. And then whoever comes in new always comes after me, right? Because they're the new young officer so that I can keep track of them, so I'm around. I mean, you know, so I can have my own little bits of time off in there. It works itself out. I promise you that. But again, a lot of things are just overblown in the fact that I understand that there's a fear and I understand that there's a concern to that and I respect that. But on the flip side of it, like I said, even the thing that was posted online today even showed. The call base is not there that everybody is worried about, that, oh my gosh, you know, and I think I've talked to the city of Lorenz too, I mean, when we, we're talking through this stuff. The, the call base in Lorenz, this isn't Lorenz when I was an officer in Lorenz in nineteen ninety-four. I mean, I'm actually coming up on my anniversary. May fourteenth in nineteen ninety-three, my first law enforcement job was in the city of Lorenz. And I remember how it was. This is not that Lorenz and every, people have that speck of memory.
I have a copy of the bill we get from the sheriff's office dating all the way back to November. That shows our weekly numbers for calls if you would like me to forward those to you. I mean, what did I say? The one we get was like four, three, six. The max we had in one week was eight.
And those, are those emergent calls or all calls?
Those are all the calls. That's exactly what your sheriff's department did.
Is there any way to put a stipulation in that until, until we would go with this, until. We got, you got somebody hired for Lorenz?
That could, again, that's a very if, yeah, I mean, and I, I don't know that, because we're always gonna be that. And so like I said, now we're down short one. So all of a sudden, now I fill Lorenz with two, well then Lorenz says, well, that's not really fair because you're down. I think that that gets into this. I, I, I don't know that we wanna go there. Yes, they're down right now, but remember, a lot of what they're paying for two is me. So they are not gonna be able to, I mean, they've had significant issues and the firing, the city of Marion could not find it. They had to go through two cycles just to find somebody to go there as a chief of police. Nobody, let alone wants to be an officer, let alone want to be faced the public and the wonderment of, of people's thought processes. So, you know, so that's, that's my concern, is that they're also paying for me to help get that done. And so I wouldn't want even, I wouldn't even want, I, we just need to get, we just get going with that. Because who is gonna, so if I don't do that, then I'm gonna have to now work a second job to get them up. I mean, you see where I'm going with that? Cause Hillary, you know, John, there, that's not what they know how to do. If anybody in here wants to learn how to hire cops, I'll teach ya. It is not pleasant. It is not in the, I'm just saying. And I think I've done a pretty good job of keeping my numbers.
Can I ask a question about the ninety day thing? Is that allowed?
No.
Okay.
So on the, the notice of, or like say we're, we're gonna ninety day, we're gonna give ninety day notice, whatever. Is that a discussion that happens here at city council? Feedback from the cops? We can bring that up at any time, put it on the agenda?
Yeah, it would have to come out of the city council meeting because you've authorized a twenty eighty, you revoke the twenty eighty.
Is there any way we can move that to sixty days? Is that possible or not? Is that too short of a?
That's too short of a time, because they would have to, so then they would have to then go back into negotiations and to ask them to do ninety days. You know, like you said, we started this January first, you know, and I came to this council pretty much every, every meeting and discussed this during my report. So, and look how long it's taken. And that's just to get people together and that's just to get, I think ninety days is a lot more of a fair number. To me.
Yeah, and I, I can understand, I just, all of a sudden, let's say we lose a cop, we lose something and then there's just not, you know.
I, like I said, again, I think I've shown my dedication to cover that. And to be about that, because even last Friday, you know, I sent Mason, cause him and Josh are close, sent him down and I covered him, so he could go. I didn't get paid for it. I didn't get, you know, I covered you down, you know, and I say that in my. You know, it was my day off.
Yep.
Alex, can you answer one more question?
Sure.
Everybody's concerned about what this Pocahontas get out of this. Can you go over that one more time?
The biggest thing is retention of officers. I mean, as Mason says astutely and everything else, is that it allows us to provide a higher level of pay. Because we are still behind the curve, because if we go out there and we start to look around us at what all the wage rates are. We need to be approximately in the seventies. One thing is, and that comment that was already made about the sheriff's office taking employees, which they actually haven't in a long time. I mean, if you actually look at that, our sheriff's office is not. Um, but I want, but again, they set their low end salary at seventy-eight thousand, three thousand dollars more a year than I was making. So what's that gonna put you? So if they add two Lorenz offices, they're gonna hire two at seventy-eight. Do I lose those two? I'm not saying that they've ever said they were gonna leave or anything, but you see my problem with that. You are non-competitive. And they have free family health. They have all of that stuff. So we've gotta, this is to me between both cities, because I think it's best for us as well to have those extra officers in Lorenz. Because now Lorenz is providing two more back to the team, right? Otherwise, that team is gone. And nothing against the sheriff's office, love the sheriff's office, love the deputies. But the problem is, is that they get spread so thin. I mean, we still have calls. I mean, like I said, just two weeks ago. I had to play, I, I had to be on for the county because the deputy sheriff was, and he was the only one on the weekend. And that's fine. People have deserved their time off. I'm not. because the deputy sheriff was, and he was the only one on the weekend, and that's fine, people deserve their time off, I'm not, again, I, sorry, hate to break into these things, but I just, I know where the next, I feel that I know where the next accusation is coming. We do that for each other. We don't ask for it, we don't, because we always do that stuff. So you see where I'm going with that, is I mean, I, I think that, you know, those kind of things are just, you know, those are the advantages that we have, and then we can build that team up, and that's what I think is awesome about the fact that Lorenz is trying to keep officers on the street, because it only makes us safer, because at night, when I only have one deputy, and I've got Josh fresh out of the academy, running to a domestic with a man with a gun, who else is coming? I got one deputy and Josh. If I have a Lorenz officer out, I mean, and obviously statistically, it may happen, may not, I have a better chance to have another officer there. And that's my point.
Where, at what point, say, you do have to start, if, our, our officer is in Lorenz, well, at what point do we, you decide that you had to do something, you know, another officer in Lorenz to cover more, or, you know, how? So, at, at what point do you say that our, that officer's out of Pocahontas too much?
That's again, we just have to evaluate that on the on-call thing, which is not something that is a routine, that's done and, and other, I'm a constant, you know.
It might not ever happen, it might, it might happen, just, at what point do you say our officer's in Lorenz more than he's in Pokie? Which, and where, when do we need to hire another officer?
Right, well, and th- those are also actually discussions, and that goes back to Mayor, Mayor Halbert, when she was the mayor and stuff, and she like, the school res- you know, like wanting a school resource officer. I mean, Mason and I, what were we on our day shifts, like six hours a day, we were spending at the school. You see my, you see our problem, so we were analyzing that, and thankfully, because of, especially, I mean, obviously, I, I'm not saying we all didn't help, but, you know, the day guys, that's what we were doing, and the school did a great job of going in there and saying, this is what we need to do, this is what we, and we've reduced those calls. We don't have near the calls we had two years ago, I mean, it was just, it's, it was just insanity, and so now we do have some calls, but our, our total time spent at the school, other than walking through, when maybe, you know, hanging out at a basketball game, just making people, you know, see us and whatnot, it's gotten much better, so, I mean, if you don't, I mean, again, and I just throw that back there, I constantly watch the calls, I, they know, I mean, Mason get an email, hey, you know, this, or Josh, hey, this, or whoever, Tyler, whatever, Nick used to get a, you know, we need to update this call. I track every day, part of my chief duties is to also make sure our guys are doing things in the way they need to be done. I supervise them directly, and not that they need to be great supervision, it's just sometimes there's questions and whatever, so, and so now we just, and I think that just, and then it brings that even, that teamwork even closer together, because now we've got two agencies that, while distinctly separate, have a bond, and a lot of our calls, and a lot of their calls are all connected together. So, ready to take action?
Can I add one more benefit for you? I don't want me to write some stuff, um, but one of the things that we did in the and the discovery, my research of it, is on your cert page for your budget, you are allowed a levy for any, um, a law enforcement twenty-eight E agreement. I reached out to Ted Nelson, our guru at the Department of Management, and asked how the city of Lorenz or the city of Pocahontas would be able, if we would be able to do that. Well, we weren't allowed to do it on this budget, once the agreement is signed, we can take it to the county auditor and put it on the ballot. Um, for Lorenz, it generated for this year fifty thousand dollars for our budget, with mere cents on the dollar to the taxpayers. So, in, in addition to, I mean, taking a load off your budget, putting it on ours, and helping you raise, you would also have the increase on your, um, on your general, your your general funds, um, budget levy, so you'd also have that addition. Um, like I said, I don't know if Pocahontas is, Lorenz was around fifty thousand, um, like I said, on mere cents on the dollar, so that's, um, another positive that you would have. Um, I'd also like to liken it to, um.
Look, we're getting into the weeds here, kinda though, if we're letting public comment, we didn't let Tiffany speak in our.
She's not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought this was part of the discussion, like you.
She has the city manager.
But it's not, and it's not on the agenda, her name's.
I know, but you can't just let public comment on everything we want to comment if we're not gonna let Tiffany speak too. I'm just saying that that's not, I'm not gonna agree with what somebody says, but we kinda gotta play both sides here. So if you wanna finish, if we're fine with that, then Tiffany can ask her a question, then we'll be done with public comment on any of this, because it should be our discussion.
I'm sorry, I did not.
No, no, that's, and I'm not, it's, we allow you to speak, if, if you wanna finish your comment, then I, we probably should let Tiffany ask her a question.
I have.
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay, um, I just wondered, like, with the ninety days, so, we still have to go through, I know that there are four applicants. Um, he's already stated that one is gonna go to the military, um, I believe another one has to be seen in front of the board to even see if he can go back to the academy, um, which all that takes time, so our first ninety days basically really is going to just be our two here, right?
Yes.
Be, because of the, the hiring and the academy process and all of that, so will that first ninety days be just on Pokie PD?
And you correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of it is, is it's twenty-one hours from Alex, and then it's also we're answering the calls. But we're not over there actively patrolling.
Max of twenty-one.
A max of twenty-one hours, including his administrative time.
And then just to go work on hiring people.
Exactly, which will take a lot of time in itself.
But, was my question answered?
So, so basically a total of twenty-one hours, the way I understand it, Tiffany, is twenty-one hours, as he uses that time up, it decreases, and that's the only, that's all the hours we can work on.
And, and we honestly aren't gonna know until if, if we decide to go through that, that's the only way you're gonna figure it out, because it, there's just a lot of.
There's a lot unknowns.
Yeah.
And then who, and at what point is it decided if it is or isn't working after those ninety days?
It's the council, it's the council.
Okay.
That, that question was answered, we talked about that, and said, I said, how do we decide if it's not working, and is it you, Alex, or is it, we said it's city council?
Okay, because I know, I mean, as much as Alex pours into his policing, I don't feel like Alex would be the one to pull the plug, because he tries and tries and tries and tries until he makes it work or, or it explodes. So, having someone else's, maybe that was the wrong way to put it, Alex, I'm sorry, um, but I know that you, when you set your mind, you give it all. So, having someone else have a look at it also, and it not just be on Alex's? Just like.
All the comment.
So, yeah, so.
So now it's up to you.
So, uh, if you use up eighteen of them hours, they only need to be three hours over there.
Well, three hours over there, and then if any calls then come in, then we bill.
Yep.
At the right rate in the office. So then, that's what I understand, it's not just a solid fast twenty-one, it's then above twenty-one, so if we should run into a wall, and it goes above twenty-one, then, again, you're then getting reimbursed above twenty-one.
Yeah.
Right.
Bill out for one.
And what we, what we talked about, and which will be in the, like Hillary's talking about the memorandum, is part of that was setting the mileages and setting exactly that we would, we would figure it out by the rate of the salary of the officer, that would be the expense of Lorenz.
Vice person back to Pokie Jim.
Correct.
If it was officer.
So I go back.
Absolutely.
Want to draw a question? Make motion to accept twenty-eight E agreement for ninety days.
I'll second it.
Move this.
Yes.
I don't know if you can do it just for ninety days, I think you could step to the. I just wanted to be careful, I don't want you to disappoint the girls.
For twenty-eight E agreement.
Okay, 'cause the ninety days.
Yeah.
It's in the box. I just didn't want you to, all of a sudden you had an engagement.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Brian?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Cody?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Dean?
Hi.
So we now have approved the twenty-eight E. Okay, now it's reports.
Me? Um, just been busy. Same.
You don't want.
Shocker.
You don't wanna talk about, okay. Nope, it's been a busy few days, we're finding out some things are in the bank that should be in a different bank account, so we're having fun there, and our new utility billing clerk starts Thursday, so.
Good.
Yes, finally, a full house again. Council, huh?
I don't have it in.
Yeah, dude. Anyway, good.
Mayor?
I just appreciate the efforts we're gonna make here, and we have things to work out, which in the end, if it doesn't work out, we have a way out, and I appreciate that. Salute.
Thank you.